I have six fifteen, I'd like to open the special permit hearing for fifteen Maria, via Maria, sorry. Is that you folks? Okay, we have. Your drawing here. The tennis drawing of a deck, we're the planning board, so we deal with zoning. So we need to know setbacks and all of that. Information.
We weren't giving specifics on what.
And if you're.
The deck would come out at least sixteen feet from the house. What is already was a bunch of pavers, paved patio.
Okay, so, so you're applying in this for. Because you feel the pavers were a pre-existing non-conforming? You, you understand your permit, your, your application or not?
We were just following what we're told we had to do.
Did you have a contractor who tried to apply to the permission order to do this? Having trouble seeing like the information on what exactly. The distance was from the neighbors, things like that, so then we had to come here and ask and we were told that we had to put an ad on paper. But that's what we've done so far, so let us know what it is that we need to do. It is an existing basically.
The building department? Okay. Okay, so what, what your application is for is. You're trying to claim. That. Your, your structure now is in a non-conformity to our zoning. I guess.
Can I just interrupt for a minute?
Yeah.
I, I'm a little confused about why you're even here, maybe you are too. Okay, so we have this business called a special permit, which means that it's not a. Construction by right that you're entitled to just receive automatically requires some review. And there are a lot of different ways that that can arise. One is often we find in cases that we get that it's because something is too close to a boundary line.
That is, that is why. That is.
Correct.
Uh, the boundary line. Is there?
And what is too close to the boundary line? Is it your house or is it the deck that you want to build?
The deck that we want to build. You know, we have not had a surveyor. We didn't know if we had to do that or not. But, you know. I can tell you that our neighbor has two. The large that separated from their house that is built within the setback. Uh, I mean, I can also show you pictures of the lines and some pictures. Yes.
Yep.
So we have, we have no idea.
We have no idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here's, here's your house.
Yes, so. So if, if we're looking at this.
Describe the streets, you're on a corner lot.
Right, we're on a corner lot.
Which means you have two front setbacks.
So we're trying to build on the side of the house here.
This side of the house.
Yes.
And that's our neighbor's.
This is our neighbor's garage that's here, that's detached from their house.
How far away is that?
That is with. That's within the, pretty close to the property line as well. But I can show you the pictures that I took.
We're not complaining about that.
Right, we're just.
No, no, no. I just think that we, we, we're gonna need. From a surveyor. So they can have the property lines and then show us.
It's within the property lines.
Where the setback is from the property line to where this end of the edge of the deck is.
I think there was a little lack of clarity of what that exactly needed to be.
Here, here's. A picture of their garage, this is the side of our.
Make it smaller. But we're not sure.
This is what we're replacing.
It is smaller than what the.
So there was papers all along.
So the pavers were placing the water to the house, we, we bought this fixer up, we've done a lot to fix the house up.
The problem is.
They still on a twenty foot setback for the side setback?
So with the deck there.
Under special permits, you have an existing structure. It's already within the setback and you're continuing along the range line of that existing building. You're being a five ray subject to extend the existing non-conformative. So what we're looking at here is if there's an existing structure and you follow along the same line and you're not approaching any further. Within the setback. Then that could grant you.
Granted special permits.
So, so there were.
This is an existing structure.
Right, there were pavers all along the side of the house here.
He said they were going to a lot.
The pavers are basically a hardship.
And so we're just replacing what was already there with the pavers. With a, that will. Um, attach to the house and replace these loose steps here that are on the side of the house. These steps are loose and they need to be replaced. This um, existing fence here is loose and falling apart as you can see. Um, so we're just trying to put a deck there on the side of the house on the site where the original. Pavers were.
Could I just offer? So whether you had, where there are pavers is not a matter of concern to zoning, you can take the whole thing or not. Without any permit. Um, but when you put deck up, that is a structure and it does put it on a different sort of footing for zoning. If you, as Conrad was saying a few minutes ago, if you are already too close to the sideline. With your building. Let's say for the sake of example, you're ten feet from your side yard line. Okay, just.
With the existing house building?
Yes, you know, to the boundary between the boundary and the house, right?
Right.
Okay, if it's, let's say just for sake of illustration, it's ten feet. If you then want to build a ha- uh, deck. Further back or out or sideways or something that only still is ten feet or eleven feet or twelve feet from the, from the. Boundary, even though it's fif- fifteen feet minimum required. Or twenty feet minimum required.
What is the requirement? Because I've been hearing lots of different.
Fifteen, okay, so.
Fifteen. Yep. Okay, our, our house is not already within the setbacks.
Is that, I mean, it's too close or it's not?
No, no, it's nowhere near. It's much more than twenty-five feet from the property.
So then that takes it out of the possibility of granting relief, doesn't it? If, if it's not already a non-conforming use.
I, I believe so.
Avenue where they can go to the zoning board of appeals, seek a hardship relief if they feel there's a hardship. To get a eventual variance.
That would be the room. So, so the, just so I can, I can be clear. The house is already well. Within the bounds, it's nowhere near the property line, it's further than twenty-five feet from the property.
Conforming location.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're just. Wanting to build the sixteen by sixteen. Deck.
Right.
Adding on to the side of the.
I understand that, but I'm afraid you're missing my point, which is that in Lee's peculiar zoning situation. If your house happened to be too close, that would be good for you tonight. Because it would entitle you to a kind of relief under our bylaw that is not available to people who are already in compliance with the zone. The peculiarity.
Here's what I will. Already within, if it's already within in compliance with zoning, you, you either, you have. Two choices, you either. Remain within compliance. Or an avenue would be a variance to the ZVA.
Isn't there another paragraph in that six point one that?
Only if it's non-conforming. If they wanted to increase. If they wanted to in- increase.
Pre-existing non-conformer. Okay.
That's six two.
If it's not non-conforming, then six one doesn't have anything to say. Another way you look at this too is, here's the property line, here's the house, I don't know what the setback, say your house is thirty foot back from the setback. Okay, and the setback line is fifteen, so you could put by right. A deck from the face of your house moving to the property line, so if it's, say it was thirty feet. And the setback was fifteen feet, you could put a fifteen foot deck by right, just getting a building permit. And you'd still be fifteen feet from the boundary. You wouldn't even need to come see a board. By right, but somehow, somebody thought you needed to come to us.
Well.
We don't really know what. Depends on what that setback is of the existing house. And unless you have a survey of that. Yeah. Or some demonstration of what.
Not an entire either, just that prop, that line, if that was surveyed, then that would give you an exact.
Should we ask them to go back to the building department? And either Matt gives an explanation? Can we, can we put this off or not to allow them to act on? Uh, I know, but why did they send them there? I mean, as you just said, your explanation.
Honestly, they did not seem to know. They weren't real clear. It's also, it's also.
Yeah.
We, they can't give a lot of legal advice on this, a land use person would be. Land use lawyer is the best group. And I, I gotta say.
We were told the first step was add a paper to make. For five hundred dollars.
Part of the special. That's, that's what the, the building people told us that we need to do, so.
Can I, can I offer where I think we are? Um, I think we need two things, one is we need to know why they told you what they told you, so far we're, we're completely puzzled. About why you're even here, why you had to pay the fee. We don't understand, okay, so we need to, we, before we can grant relief, we have to know what you're asking for and nobody here in this room seems to know that.
I mean, it's, yeah, as far as I know, it's because they were concerned that once the deck was built. It would be within the setback.
Okay.
But that's.
Okay, if it's just that case, if that's the only fact. Want to build a deck too close to the side yard setback or the front yard or whatever yard it is. Then this is not the right board that they sent you to and they should refund your money. And.
Can I have that in writing?
I can't give it to you in writing, but you can come back and ask us to, to. Take action on it and get, all we can do is give advice to the, to the administrator, we can't, it'll work for us. But. It, it seems that unless the building is already in non-compliance. We can't understand why you're here and been, been directed here to us. Okay, there is, there's two, as Buck said, there's two things you could do if, if those are the facts. You can build a smaller deck that's not as close to the side yard. And you can try for a variance because, which is hard to do, it's a different board. It's the zoning board, not the planning board. And it's hard to do because you have to show that there's something very unusual about your lot. That prevents you from doing what you want in compliance with the zoning, it's very difficult in Massachusetts to achieve. A variance, okay? So. Um, at the minimum, we're, I think, I think every member has spoken on this or nearly. We're gonna need to know. Precisely where your house is in relation to the boundary. Somebody's gonna have to figure out where the boundary is, a surveyor is the best way to do that, unless you know for sure where your boundary is. Right now. And could swear to us that you know it. Uh, at the next meeting, you know, give us a, give us your hand drawn map, but a zone, but a.
Yeah.
Survey, I'm sorry, could I just finish? A, a surveyor's map would be the best thing to figure that out by. Um, so if you came back here, I would want to see a surveyor's map or something reliable that you grew from your own knowledge. Based on something that you know. Uh, about how far away from the boundary you, your. Deck would be. But I think you may not be coming back here, you may be going for a smaller deck or a variance from the other board, is that, have I made myself clear?
Yes, you've made yourself clear, I just, uh.
I feel like you're chasing your.
Getting ridiculous, I mean, you know, we've done nothing but improve that lot. And the, you know. We understand that, we totally understand. So that's all we're trying to do is to continue to improve it and improve the look of the neighborhood. You know, it's just. You still.
Then, if somebody plot the house up.
You still need that, that line survey.
Yeah, but, but, but if it's town, the town bats that are online are good enough for that, people are not.
They're close.
It looks like it's, it could be as much as twenty-five, thirty foot setback on that side. No, and depending on what size of deck.
It's within ten feet. The GIS. I, I'm fairly certain that the house itself. Is. At least about thirty feet from the actual property line.
That.
Okay, so it's. You know. So ea- either way, you might want to have that line survey, because if you say you do, like. Peter said. Choose to do a smaller deck and you could set that. Side. Exactly right on that. That setback line. Yeah, it's an irregular shaped, um. Yeah. It is a little, it does slow. Yeah. Fortunately, I don't think we have. We might have a half a dozen lots that are actually square with the house in the whole town. Most are. So. Well, I guess we don't really know what the next step is, yes, of course, it sounds like we need to get. A surveyor out to. You know, find exactly where the, the line is, and I did. I, I'll share with you that I got, I had ten days, um, notice that this was the meeting that we were supposed to come to. I will share that with you, so that was not enough time for me to. Find a surveyor and. Well, the application that it's under is not even applicable for this.
Well, why don't we continue tonight's hearing? And give you a chance to come back if you want, or to withdraw your application if that's what you choose to do. But I do think that somebody from this board. And you. And the zoning administrator should meet and try to.
We.
Figure out what basis thing is on.
Or at least some communication from the board to. People upstairs. That has happened, yes. Yep, because.
So, you know, you're.
And, and all they can do is, is we, they can provide information of our zoning. And unfortunately, they are not. Advisors, they're not consultants. They will tell you what is, they can approve a permit for and what they can't. And beyond that, that is really up to a land use attorney. And surveyors. A, a land use attorney will tell you what, what you can do here and what you can't.
Which just seems to, again.
Cannot give legal advice.
Okay.
I think, I think that the town zoning administrator can tell people whether the thing that they propose. Is disallowed, allowed by right or allowed with a special permit, that's a decision that.
I think they should at least be able to point us in the right direction, which I don't. Not according to. Necessarily think we're going to point it in the right. You know, that's, that's the least, that's very least, they should be able to tell us.
So can I just observe that you mentioned thirty feet, you think, wh- where's the boundary, just, just.
Sure, sure.
Right, is the boundary over here somewhere?
So, um. So this is, and, and the house was built in two different.
Stages.
Phases or stages. Not very thoughtfully, I might add, but, um. So. This is one part of the house, there's this little alley and this is another part of the house.
Oh.
So the deck is here and then the line would be, you know, somewhere over here.
Okay, so you would be bringing your structure. Fifteen feet. Sixteen feet, right, now you mentioned thirty feet maybe as a, as a round estimate, okay? If it's thirty-one feet, you're golden, right? Cause there's fifteen feet then left, right? Exactly. Uh, so, or if it's thirty feet exactly.
Make it a foot.
Make it a fifth foot shorter and you don't even have to come back here.
So my, my other question though is, um. You know. We paid five hundred dollars for this, so, uh. You know, what, it would. If this is the wrong board, then.
Yeah.
Can we get our five hundred dollars back or me?
My opinion is.
Without knowing all the whole story, we cannot. We can't tell them. And it's turning into.
Let me tell you, let me tell you why it's five hundred dollars.
No, I.
If it were a special permit, I'm utter.
Yeah.
There's a statute and the statute says you have to do newspaper ads. Newspaper ads cost the town money and it's about five hundred dollars last I heard. So we're out about that much money, we didn't put it in our bank account for the town Lee and.
No, I'm not paying that.
Got spent on newspaper ads for this event tonight. So, um, whether it gets refunded or not, it's not a decision that I can make, my opinion is if it turns out. That a mistake was made in advising you on where to go and you paid five hundred dollars, that the town should refund that, that's my opinion. But I don't have my opinion and five dollars will get you a cup of coffee, so.
So other than, um. Having a surveyor. Plot that side of the, the property. What's our next step? We go back upstairs and say. They told us that we went to the wrong meeting or we. Without, without knowing exactly, right now with what you brought us, we don't even know where that setback is. Okay, so when. You need a, you need a true. A true site plan with all the setbacks of the whole property.
It could be a mortgage survey too, it doesn't have to be a full.
In particular, I mean, and, and if you need, if you're that close. I would. I, I think a surveyor would, would be the best. So when is your next meeting?
Second.
Second Monday, second Monday in October. But, but all we, we do is if that's pre-existing non-conforming, you would see us.
So essentially if it's more than fifteen feet, we don't even come back. And I can pretty much guarantee it's more than fifteen feet from our house to our property line, I would be shocked.
No, it would have to be, no, it's definitely more than.
Yeah.
You want it to be fifteen feet.
I'm guessing.
No, I understand.
Before I say that, I got, I gotta make sure that you, it is our twenty. I'm going by that it's our twenty. Um, do you have it in GIF? Does it say what it is? Wish we had a big zoning.
I had a photograph of the town zoning that you want us to consult.
Yeah. Fair, Fairview Street, the Vias. Thank you.
Can pull it up over here if you want a bigger screen.
Nope, this is working. Ah, look at that. Look at you.
I know, look at this. Anyway, um, I don't know, oh, well, you can look down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you know.
Right, we have Fairview Street here. It's odd.
I know. They're, what are you gonna, here, you can get.
So. Fifteen, I was. I misspoke, you are in the RA zone. Which is a twenty-five foot setback.
That's worse.
And that's the problem, I think that really is the problem. Okay.
Okay, now, now let's, let's reanalyze that, if they're at twenty-four feet right now, then they belong here.
If the house is.
If the house is at twenty-four feet, it's non-conforming.
Right.
Right.
Would belong here and we could give relief, but we still need that map, we still need that, that site plan, right?
Right. Okay.
Okay, and you're saying that if we don't do deck and we do stone pavers, we don't have to come here, period?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, a deck's a structure, once you raise off the ground.
They could do a, a raised. Sand and brick.
And it's because of the cutting the house? That now it's just raised up. I think mainly because it's raised, it's the thing and there's, there's, well, you see the full foundation, the full. Yeah.
Attached to the ground.
Yeah. Okay.
I move to, uh, continue this to the next meeting at six fifteen P. A second Monday in October.
Yes, then determine what are, what are the setbacks. Maybe we can get somebody. Well, I mean, if, but here's the thing, if, if you're corner your house, you'll, you can go off GIS. And if it's more than twenty-five feet, we cannot offer any option here. Okay?
So essentially, if it's more than twenty-five feet, then we don't come back here.
Correct. Yep. But we will keep that, we will continue this until. You're keeping all that or do we need to? Um, we're gonna need, if you come back, we're gonna see a lot more with the measurement on that side of that back.
Do you want to keep that with you?
Sure, well, yeah.
Here, when I made a motion.
Yep, there's a motion.
Sure.
Second. Any further discussion? Go around the table, Conrad.
Survey, and on the survey, can they superpose what your plan is?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do, so we can see. Where the house is and how this thing's gonna be laid out.
What they call, a kind of a plot, they call it a plot plan. So you, where all your structures are.
You would superpose this. On your survey. Which shows the house. From the survey, what the setbacks are from that, and then what you want to see here.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Already, thank you.
We gotta vote?
Yeah, we, we do need a vote.
Conrad, you're supposed to vote, not give us.
I'm voting, I mean, I'm voting.
Hi.
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order.
Hold on, don't go yet.
No, 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 not a bad thing, it doesn't matter, but I, I never heard a second to the motion, I, Conrad just started talking. Okay, for the record, okay, great, for the record, that's all, no, just for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon. Okay.
Um, I, this, Gordon, while, while you're there.
Yes.
You hear. You hear the, um. We need to be able to give advice. I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do this. But because I know town council has spoken, but.
Yeah.
Upstairs needs to be able to give some sort of guidance to people.
Yes, and the guidance, and, and I did hear Mr. Boone's, uh, comment and I was going to, um, uh, address that. Um, a- as a building official, a zoning enforcement official, you cannot give legal advice. And because there's such a drastic difference between a special permit and a variance. Um, i- it's up to the building department, the zoning enforcement person to let people know if they need zoning relief. But it's up to their personal attorney to tell them whether that is a special permit or a variance, it is not. And I would underscore never be the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer because it is a legal. Issue and you can check with town council on that and I think he will support my. Uh, position that you never tell someone whether they need a special permit or variance, it's total. Because the findings are different, the ramifications long-term on a property. One can be contingent on ownership, one cannot be contingent on ownership. So there's so many different variations that the zoning enforcement officer doesn't know what these people want to do down the road. That's why they need to talk to.
Right, but he, he, he knows what they're, they want to present.
Right, and.
So he says, I can't, I can't give you a building permit for that.
That's correct, you need zoning relief. That is the terminology, you need zoning relief, you need to speak with an attorney about what's best for your situation, whether it's a special permit. Or a variance, cause in some, and I would love to come in and talk to the board. Um, and, and I will say, I, I know, um. That I have had discussions with, uh, planning board members and, and zoning enforcement officer in the past. And I would love to come in and. And explain. Certain aspects of the Supreme Court, uh, Judicial Court of Massachusetts decisions. That spell this out, that tell the zoning enforcement officer to not. Give advice, but leave it up to private attorneys. Love to be able to do that anytime you guys are willing to listen.
Well, I think that might be, that might be profitable, I recommend that we do that, I do not understand how the. Zoning administrator can do their job without giving what some people would call legal advice. Is it, is it, but what is, is it legal advice for me to ask you, Gordon, are you giving me legal advice if I ask you if I can drive? Hundred miles an hour on the Mass Pike, is that legal advice to answer that?
Well, what I can say. Well, what I can say is, well, look at the posted sign. It's sixty-five miles an hour. Do what you want. You might get pulled over. I would recommend they not do it.
That's not legal advice then?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so what is the boundary for legal advice, please?
Sure, well, I, I think, as far as our bylaws go, um, uh, Mr. Bo, it, the issue is that there are different outcomes depending on which road you take, depending on whether you go the special permit road or this, or the variance road. Number one, you are correct to point out that if these people are not in the zoning setback, that this should not even be in front of this board. My understanding in talking to the zoning, um, enforcement people and the planner is that these folks were never told to apply for a special permit, but they were given copies of our bylaws so that they could determine which route to take. This was not advised by, this is my understanding and I could be totally off base. My understanding was they were given these, um, uh, zoning bylaw sections, variance and special permits and, and sent on their way to make their own decision as to what they should do. Now, whether or not I'm on the right page, I don't know. Um, but I'm telling you, that's what I've been told. So, again, people are reluctant to talk to an attorney, but this is one of the most critical things they can do between special permit and variance and understanding. And by the way, the GIS, uh, when you look at twenty-four, that's the degrees, the, the number of degrees, the actual GIS dimension from the corner of their house to the boundary is twenty-nine feet. Again, I, I've done some research in the background and I just didn't want to speak to this. This is something you can check on your own. Um, uh, and again, I looked at it on a big computer. I didn't look on it on like, uh, Conrad's small screen. Um, but anyway, I, 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 that's all, that's all I have to say. And I, I, I would love to talk to the board because there were a couple of comments tonight that I think might not that, that may need to be corrected on the concept of the one, two, three issues within chapter six. Um, and anyway, I'd love to talk to you folks and, um, appreciate it if you'd be willing to let me do that. And other than that, I will sign off. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Gordon.
You feel about an agenda?
I think we should because there's more, there is more. I have spoke with Gordon on this, um, myself and, um, we've at a little bit length. And, um, there are misconceptions I had, I think, on it on the pre-existing non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I was kinda under the assumption if you had one section non-conforming, that it kinda gave you rights to make anything non-conforming. And it really, like you, you said, it, it's like, oh, that gives you like a extra pass that nobody else has. But, uh, there's been some, um, state land court stuff and everything. And if you, it, really, your, your only right is that encroach the, you're already non-conforming section.
Yeah.
You, you can't go on the other side of the house. And even though it is conforming, make it non-conforming because, oh, I have, I have a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
But you can do an extension of the non-conforming, you're, it's on the same range line of where that non-conformity is.
By, by right, but then if you encroach further, you need the special permit.
I understood that.
Six-two.
If your setback was, let's say your setback was a six feet.
Yeah.
See, there's a, there's a hook in the building.
Yep.
And as long as that's that building is at six feet.
Yep.
You can extend past that on the same six-foot range line.
Sure.
Because that new structure is gonna be within the same six foot.
Right.
That's the grantee of a special permit for that.
Mm-mm, doesn't even need a special permit because you're not encroaching any further. Once you encroach further.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, that's exactly the discussion I'd like to have you folks and I will bring documentation and court cases. Rather than you, um, worrying about it tonight, I'm just suggesting you may wanna wish till I can present the board all the Supreme Judicial Court cases that will support certain positions, um, for your enjoyment or whatever. Identification, how's that?
There, but I think there are two classes of issues that I would like to discuss with Gordon and with the board. One is what is the meaning of six point one under Massachusetts law and under Lee precedent? And I welcome his advice on that and his knowledge of Massachusetts uh, court decisions. The other issue I think is equally important, perhaps more, which is what kind of service does a town offer to people who come in as citizens looking at a hundred and forty-page zoning bylaw? And get told, well, you know, I can't tell you what you should do. You know, if you could do this, it'll cost you five hundred bucks and you could do that, it'll cost you five hundred bucks or, you know, but I can't give you a permit today because that's a straight up the middle thing is not available to you, but it's your guess as to whether you turn left or right, as to which board. I think that is a poor level of service to the public. I don't think that making a determination of whether based upon a filing, now this was an insufficient filing, so it was messy to start with. But if this filing had been clear, I don't think it should be objectionable that the zoning administrator makes a determination of what boards, if any, need to review and approve something before a zoning approval can be granted. That is the job of the zoning administrator to help explain this monstrously long zoning thing we have, and it's very confusing even to people who've lived with it for years. And I think the town should really make an effort to take a very narrow view of this doctrine of no legal advice found here, citizen. So that's my view. And I'd like to discuss that with Gordon when he comes back too.
Uh, I would be more than happy to bring your documentation on that. Thank you. Uh, put me in whatever you want, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gordon.
Good.
I agree on that one. I, I just feel we're, we're giving a disservice to our community, but the lawyers rule the world.
They may be overreacting, but I completely understand how confused they were.
More to it.
Okay.
Oh, there might have been. Who knows? All right.
Yeah.
So, do we?
Wanted the easiest route.
It seems like there's always more.
There are always, there are always.
Yes, I spoke with Brooke quite a bit on it.
Oh, okay.
They came in and this is, they.
We don't need to say anymore.
Yeah, um.
She did not give any advice because she had already gotten reprimanded because of it.
You can't, no.
Oh, God.
You can't give advice legally, right?
Well, I don't know, what?
No, we'll find out.
Legal advice, but there should be an avenue that we could give some sort of flow chart.
Anything can be characterized as legal advice. Any, you know, don't speed on interstate. That's legal advice.
Well, what we do, we
Mm-hmm.
in our, in our decisions can be legally overruled.
I know. I know. Well, all right, so.
Next up?
Why don't we, oh, I'm.
Yes, we'll put, um,
Gordon, I'll get. Or ask him when he can.
We'll shoot for the next meeting maybe? Or we will not have him the same time that we.
No.
Add CJ. So we'll get him and I'll coordinate that and let everybody know.
Yeah.
Um, so that special permit hearing is closed. Was continued, um, discussion continued.
Yeah.
Um, discussion, no development bylaws. I actually thought CJ was gonna be here tonight, but apparently not. Um, I think where we ended was uh, are we gonna rename and tweak the A-Rod? Our plan, one plan, another plan was, do we develop an entirely new overlay district? I think we're, are our two options.
Seems like we're sort of leaning towards the A-Rod.
And I think, and he was gonna come back with some information on both.
I, I started off thinking we should just rezone those places, but I'm almost persuaded the other way now. I think to agree with you, Buck, that redoing the A-Rod is certainly it would be, it's a structure that we could use with very little adaptation. Uh, but, uh, and it could be extended later, you know, we could say, well, it's these three places now, but it, you know, maybe there's another place that needs it to be added to the overlay later, that's.
Now. Um, um, you know, country curtains building someday.
Yeah, yeah, almost any, any
Any place.
substantial industrial.
It just, it seems odd, it seems a little weird for me that we just brought the A-Rod number down, lower. And, and it seems a little funny that we're encompassing anything from a, I think, seven thousand square foot, seven or eight, I don't know, somewhere down there to a hundred thousand square foot facility. That's, that's a big, that's a lot of
Big range.
Lot, big range, but does it? Is it still the same idea? It's commercial, it's always commercial.
Yeah, so, I, I think you're asking, are there things that we wanna do, let's say with Graylock Mill or allow for the Graylock Mill redevelopment that we wouldn't want to allow for a seven acre redevelopment?
Yeah.
And I think there probably are, cause we're maybe looking at you know, clustered housing up there at the Graylock Mill. So that's a, that's an argument against the overlay, I suppose, or maybe, you know, two different grades of overlay of A-Rod, you know, large, large A-Rod, small A-Rod, something, I don't know, but it it would get, that would get it complicated. And the advantage of using the A-Rod is it's not complicated.
Or what do we, yeah, we gotta come up, let's come up with a better name for it too.
Yeah.
We gotta come up with something better.
Sounds like hot rod.